Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the April 21st, 2021 Planning Commission meeting for the City of Murfreesboro. We will call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present. We have had an excellent attendance recently. Thank you so much to all of this wonderful planning commission we've got here. Our first item of business today is to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2021, and April 7th, 2021 Planning Commission meetings. If everyone had a chance to read over those, do you have any additions or corrections to any of those minutes? And if not, we just need a motion.
Here, none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. All to approve the minutes, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. The consent agenda, we have six items. The first is Pretoria Falls, a final plat for one lot, and horizontal property regime plat for 53 units on 10.2 acres, zoned PRD, located along Asbury Lane and Asbury Road. Landmark Homes of Tennessee, Inc. is the developer. Then Garden Rivers of Three Rivers, the Gardens of Three Rivers, re-subdivision of Lot 58, final plat for four lots on 0.39 acres, zoned PRD, located along Elmcroft Avenue. Patterson Company, LLC is the developer. Item C is Winsong Farms, Lot 22, a preliminary plat for two lots on 4.2 acres, zoned RS-15, located along Erby Lane. Jaclyn Williams is the developer. Item D is Winsong Farms, Lot 22, final plat for two lots on 4.2 acres, zoned RS-15, located along Erby Lane. Jaclyn Williams is the developer. Item E is the Murfreesboro Airport Hangar Number One replacement site plan for 19,114 square foot building on 3.27 acres, zoned RS-15, located at 1930 Memorial Boulevard. Morgan Construction Company is the developer. And item F is a mandatory referral to consider the addition of an MTE MC easement line located on the Jordan Farm at 1223 Cherry Lane. City of Murfreesboro is the applicant. Do I have anybody on the planning commission or staff that would like to have any of these items removed for further discussion? And if not, we'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on, we have the gateway design overlay, three items today, the first of which is the Avenue, Murfreesboro Lot 4, Buffalo Wild Wings. It is the initial design review of an existing 6,728 square foot restaurant on 1.7 acres, zoned CH, PSO, and GDO-1, located at 2535 Medical Center Parkway. Buffalo Wild Wings is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. It's good to be here. Our first item under the gateway portion of our agenda is for you to consider a project that's located in what's the Old Macaroni Grill building? And so you're probably all familiar with that. Around Christmas, it did close its doors. You have before your request for a new restaurant tenant called Buffalo Wild Wings to take the space. As part of their taking the space, they'd like to do two significant things. One is subdivide this property into its own lot of record. And you may recall several months ago, we talked about lease lines in the avenue. Currently, the way this project sits is the tenants lease the area from the overall avenue's owner, but they actually would like to purchase the land. So after this presentation, Mr. Barbie will come up and go through the plat to create this lot, but it's important to kind of note that here at the site plan stage so that you can be aware of the changes. And the other significant change is to reface the building. Macaroni Grill had a very specific architecture. They liked a lot of that stone look, and I think it was their attempt to hearken back to the Tuscan region of Italy. Buffalo Wild Wings also has pretty standard architecture. I hope that doesn't make you afraid because they've worked really hard to come up with something that would fit our community. I know sometimes their branding is quite loud, black and yellow, and you know, that may not fit within the gateway, but they came to the site wanting to fit in the gateway, also meeting their design criteria. So I'm going to pass around the material sample board so you can get a closer look at the grill. Part of their refacing does demolish a, let me get my numbers here right, about a 300 square foot area in the rebuilding, 387 square foot corner and reconstructing 637 square feet. So there is a net increase of 250 square feet. It's very nominal, but it's just something that I wanted you to be aware of. This project is in the gateway overlay and a planned signage overlay district, so any signage that they're showing is for illustrative purposes, and they'll need to make sure that through our codes department that they meet that sign ordinance criteria. The existing building is a single-story structure. It is oriented toward Medical Center Parkway. Part of the design of this building, the Buffalo Wild Wings tenant wanted to have those roll-up garage doors that we see in some restaurants now, but in deference to the gateway standards and knowing how important it is that that face from Medical Center Parkway be uniform and high quality, they've got their roll-up door facing the side and not Medical Center Parkway. You do see three large windows, but they do have brick bases along them, and so if you look at all the new additions, they are maintaining a brick base below them. That roll-up garage door that's facing interior actually doesn't allow people to walk in and out of it. If you looked at the site plan, you can see there's landscaping in front of it, and there's also some brick there as well. It's just got that style where if you're sitting in the bar area, they could open that and have the indoor/outdoor feel. I think that's pretty popular today. They are making some site modifications, but only the ones that are being required as part of this plan. They basically were able to use most of the existing utilities. They've raised the front parapet a bit. They've taken off that brick, I mean, that stone. They're proposing to put these bricks on the building and on the sides, just around the corners, adding this brick. And then the rest of the building will remain as it is, which is, I think, panels, and they'll paint them. They're proposing to leave those. This building doesn't technically meet the standard to be a predominantly brick, stone, or rock building like we'd see in new construction, but when working with applicant, I wanted to make sure that they weren't reducing that number at all. We understand, you know, early on in the process, I think when our community was becoming familiar with the new design aesthetic, we didn't quite, you know, we missed the mark sometimes. And in this one, this isn't a predominantly brick, stone, or rock building. But they're adding as much or actually more brick than was there before, so it's not decreasing the amount of brick, stone, or rock. It's actually increasing it, although they're proposing to keep the sides and the rear the same because they're not doing any demolition there. And so I wanted to present that to you and see if that was something that you were comfortable with. With the raised parapet on the front, we are asking for them to treat the back of the parapet to make sure that anything visible does have the same treatment on the front. I think we do have some representatives of the applicant here if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll be glad to answer them. I think the perspective probably gives you a good idea of what the building will look like. This is the front that's on the screen. It's a little difficult to see, but there's that brick base between those windows facing Medical Center Parkway. On the side, they're doing a enhanced takeout area, which is popular in our COVID times. Every restaurant that I've worked with said it's really important for them to have a way for people to come and pick up food without coming to the restaurant, so they are proposing that as well. Do you have any questions about this project?
Any questions for Ms. Green or any guidance regarding the initial design review of this project?
They are proposing a dark brick. Their light brick isn't white, so I didn't have comments about that, but it's not a glazed brick. So in the past, somebody wanted to do a black brick that was shiny, and that brick isn't a shiny brick, so I just wanted to make sure you were able to see that as well.
And all the parking and everything to the exterior of the lot is the same, and they meet all the requirements?
It is. They're doing a little bit of like, where they're doing demolition, they've got to take some landscaping out, and they've got, and they'll put that back. The parking is staying the same. I did have them provide numbers on their site plan about the parking because now that they're making a separate lot, it needs to be able to meet parking standards on its own, but before, when it was part of that larger avenue lots, there was an expectation of shared parking. Although I do expect there to be some people who might park in the avenues and then come here. The lot is able to just meet our minimum parking standards for restaurants, so they can, based on seats and square feet, meet the minimum parking standards in the lot lines as they're proposing.
Okay.
I'm very thankful that somebody's going into that building and it didn't stay vacant any longer than it has, so I'll make a motion that we approve subject to all staff comments.
So if there's no substantive comments, and I was waiting to see what you guys were going to say today, there may be no reason for them to come back for final design review if that is all of your opinions, of course? And so it may be that the information we have is sufficient enough for you to recommend initial and final design review approval today?
I'm fine with that, so I'm in my motion that this is first and second and final.
Initial and final design review. Motion to approve, and I believe we have a second, and you agree with the amendment to the motion, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we have the Avenue, Murfreesboro, third re-subdivision of Lot 1, final plat for two lots on 96.23 acres, zoned CH, PSO, and GDO-1, located along Medical Center Parkway. Big V or Big Five, not sure, properties developer. Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the planning commission. This is the aforementioned companion plant for Buffalo Wild Wings. If this property was not located in the gateway design overlay, it would have been eligible to be on the consent agenda. It's generally in good condition, and staff request that any approval is subject to staff comments.
So I have a curiosity question. Will the building owner be different than the landowner in this instance?
That's a great question.
Buffalo Wild Wings is acting as a tenant, so they're acting, I mean, they're leasing from the avenues or from the development, so.
So Big V Properties will own the parcel of land, but the owner of the avenue will own the building, continue to own the building? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's, yes.
Okay.
Sir, could you state your name, company?
I'm sorry, yeah. Blake Emerson. I'm with Design Engineering. We're doing the Buffalo Wild Wings with Architects Engineers for the, I think we're doing some civil work, but mainly the architectural.
Big V owns both the avenues and this parcel.
Oh, okay.
And so it's the same owner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Matt Taylor from SEC. They're setting that up for flexibility so they can sell it in the future, I think, if they need to, so, but right now, they will own both and be landlord and tenant, landlord for both pieces.
Okay.
Any other questions? We need a motion for final plat review.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Next, we have North Church Property, Lot 18, final, nope, initial design review of a 24,658 square foot commercial center gas station located on 3.08 acres, zoned CH and GDO-1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Silo Hill Lane. Gateway Investments, Inc., LLC is the developer. Ms. Green?
Thank you. Our final item under the gateway portion of our agenda tonight is for you, this afternoon, is for you to consider initial design review for Lot 18 of the North Church Property subdivision. This is, if you come off the interstate coming toward town on Medical Center Parkway, it's the first lot on your right. This area, we have informally called our hospitality campus in the past because it serves with our conference center, and we have some hotels, several hotels in this area, and we have some uses that are companion uses with those hotels. Those of us who've been on the planning commission or working with the planning commission for several years are members of Drury Inn looking at this property, and so this is the old Drury Inn property. They no longer, I think, have an interest in building a hotel here and either have sold or have a contract to sell it to the Gateway Investments who has this application before you today. Knowing how we view the property past with an expectation it should be a hotel now, it's a bit different what they're proposing. They're proposing just under 25,000 square feet of structures on this lot. There is a gas station in C Store, and C Store is basically the inside of where you go to the gas station where you can buy drinks, adjacent restaurant and retail, and about a 10,000 square foot retail or liquor store proposed to be here, so there are several buildings on this lot, and they are proposing to construct them all in one phase, not just build the gas station first and then leave vacant pads sitting for some amount of time, but they do, and they've even added notes on their plans saying that their anticipation or their desire is to construct the whole development at one time. And so when you look at the plans, I thought that would be important to note. There are a couple of things that I'd like for us to discuss today. Of course, because it's initial design review, we should go through the architecture, but I'm actually going to ask that you consider that second to kind of get, what do they say, the white elephant in the room here? This applicant has requested a driveway, a separate driveway from Silo Hill Lane directly onto Medical Center Parkway, and we've shared that request with our staff, with the planning, engineering, and with Public Works, our city engineer. As you all know, Asbury Lane and its connection to Medical Center Parkway today is not great at best. It's got a lot of difficulties. It's got a lot of access issues, and we have a long-term improvement in our major thoroughfare plan to fix that, which has the road, Asbury, going across the farm. But at this point, that's not something that our council's moving forward on yet or we're looking to do, and so our city engineer has contracted with Kimberly Horn to come up with some access modifications to help that intersection. And on the screen, I have that illustration that was shared with me by Mr. Griffith, our city engineer, and it shows, and I'll describe this in plainer terms, and if you need engineering terms, we do have our assistant city engineer here as well, but it has people coming out on Asbury Lane, driving down that middle for some amount of time, and then merging into traffic with physical barriers keeping them from merging too early. And this was a recommendation by a consultant that we hired to help us come up with some solutions for the problems we have out there. So based on this, our city engineer has said that the access onto Medical Center Parkway is in direct conflict with these improvements, shared these plans with our consultant, Kimberly Horn as well, who also said the turn lane is in direct conflict with our improvements. So the drive that's being shown on the plan is something that staff can't support, planning, engineering, because of its impact on our operations and our infrastructure, and so I wanted to maybe talk about that as a separate issue because I know it's important to the applicants. They've still shown it on the plans, but we, our staff, are concerned about that, don't think that it's something that planning commission should even recommend approval for, and so we're asking you to not approve that additional turn lane they're proposing due to it being in direct conflict with the roadway improvements. And I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or if you'd like to go ahead and talk about architecture, or?
I think we should go and talk about this now.
Sure. Mr. Taylor, of course, would like an opportunity to address you, but go.
Can I just understand, so the picture that we're looking at now shows this kind of purplish-pink section that I think is where you're saying the people from Asbury Lane pull, if they're coming out of Asbury Lane, they pull into this section and eventually merge onto Medical Center Parkway? And then, kind of as they're merging in is where we're talking about, or they've requested to add this right turn in?
Mm-hmm.
Into Silo Hill Lane?
Yes. So our experience has been that we've never, in the City of Murfreesboro, been able to design a right turn lane where people actually don't do U-turns and go the wrong way in. And so I think the idea is, the hotel before as a use had much fewer trips than the proposed uses, liquor store, gas stations, C Store, restaurants, fast food restaurants. They are drawing many more customers, and it's more of a destination for a wider range of people instead of people just coming to stay at a hotel. And so the opportunities for U-turns are significantly more, and that would directly conflict with these improvements here. Also, there's a physical barrier, of course, in some area, but we just don't, there's never been a right turn lane that we've seen people not be able to misuse, and so we know that they will.
Is the turn, are you talking about a right turn into Silo Hill Drive or a right turn into the lot before you get to Silo Hill Drive?
Directly off of Medical Center Parkway into the lot. We, of course, want them to have connection on Silo Hill.
Not shown on this. So not a turn lane, you can turn right on Silo Hill?
Oh, no. We would want them to go onto Silo Hill. The area that I've circled on the screen is the turn lane.
Medical Center Parkway. Oh, before we get to Silo Hill.
And I suspect it's because fuel trucks needing, wanting to access the site, and that'll probably tell me.
Oh, way back before. And so where are you talking about the potential, the probable U-turn?
It's further down, I think.
From Asbury.
Yeah.
Can you, I'm still not following. The, who would U-turn there coming from where?
People heading west.
From?
From town.
From town, yes. It's not often that our city engineer does have opinions about it.
After they've been to the gas station?
To get to the gas station. So there's no, I guess, I don't know, Michelle.
Go down past the median.
Yeah.
Passed here, and you turn it back in.
Do you want me to get rid of my marks?
Why would you just turn in?
Actually, I don't know how to do it.
Silo Hill and come in, why would you?
So like, if you're coming like towards the interstate on Medical Center Parkway, and you see this gas station, you'd make the U-turn there at Asbury to turn.
Because you missed it at Silo?
Well, because your first, your only chance to turn was Conference Center, so you'd have to have known about it at Conference Center to turn in at Conference Center and then come around to Shiloh to get in.
Because you can't turn left onto Shiloh off of Medical Center Parkway? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Yeah, I get it now.
So the entrance to this, to turn, if you're coming from town, the entrance to get into this is off of Conference Center around to Shiloh.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. So Shiloh is a right turn in and out also.
There's a gas station directly across the street, so would anybody try to go to a U-turn to go to the gas?
Well, if there's a, there's going to be a liquor store here, and there's going to be restaurants and other commercial stuff that could be unique to the area.
Wouldn't they do the U-turn anyway? Because they could go into Shiloh.
Right.
It's just further down, and so they'd have more room to get, well, of course, we don't want them to, but there's more room to get over by Shiloh Hill also, so they're not trying to get across two lanes of traffic to get into that entrance also. And with that, the way we're proposing, what Kimberly Horn has proposed is a signal at Asbury, and it will be a signal, I don't know how to get that picture back. Okay, so when you're coming off of Asbury, there's only a signal for the westbound traffic. The eastbound traffic will continue to flow, and they will, so the people that are westbound on Medical Center will get stopped. The Asbury people will be allowed to turn left onto Medical Center and get into that purple merge lane and then enter into traffic. So it's going to take away this ability for that, for them to stop there. They'll have to stop for the stop sign or the traffic signal, but they won't stop on the other direction.
So do you, where is the turn lane on this picture? Is it by the trees or on up?
Yeah, it's kind of by those trees because there's about 250 feet that they're extending. See how it's got that little turn lane on there where it's dashed?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going to be about 250 feet down further, so. Isn't that how long you're extending about 250?
And there's not a median, these are just open lanes, there's not a median proposed once you have this?
Yeah, there's still a little bit of a median there, yes.
Okay.
So that median stays, that gray is median.
Okay.
Can I help, if we pull up the GIS without the orange and pink on there, so you can kind of see it clearer? If y'all would like us to do that.
I'm open for anything else that will allow us to see it clear.
of Commerce, there's Conference Center Boulevard. Ms. Emerson was saying is this is where folks coming from town would have to turn in to get to the site, kind of in a circuitous way, and there is, does that help show y'all the existing conditions? There's Silo Hill at Medical Center right there, right in, right out, self-regulating because of that median right there.
Ooh. So there's Asbury, and then there's their site.
Can you keep going, moving on over so we can see the Conference Center too? Right there. No, thank you.
So what keeps somebody from coming headed east from town and still doing a U-turn at Asbury when you put in this new proposed lane? Would they still be able to make that maneuver?
They will be able to. I mean, we can't stop, we just want to limit the number of, we'll put no U-turn signs up, but.
That's going to be a.
Plus, there'll be a light stopping them.
That's going to be a hard U-turn.
No, I know. It's just to make sure there's no physical barriers.
And one of the other things we're looking at is getting, shortening, because that left turn lane is for queuing to I-24. So we've looked at a short term of eliminating that left turn lane at the Asbury, up to Asbury, so that in turn shortens the queuing to the interstate, and so making that so there's no left turn lane, so it's only the two, through lanes of traffic. So that would also help with the U-turns because they won't have a left turn lane to get into.
What's to stop someone from going off of the pink and just straight into Shiloh?
There's going to be a barrier there.
There's a barrier there.
So that they can, so that they can, so they can get, it's an acceleration lane so that they can accelerate to get into traffic on Medical Center.
But they still could go, it's a very short crossover to get through that turn lane.
Well, I think there's, I think that they had a, Kimberly Horn had, you know, some kind of like a curb or something between the acceleration lane and the travel lane.
Got it.
So they can't just make that move over.
Can I ask another question that might be connected that's not included? Is there any reason to be considering just a whole other, other lane down here on eastbound, eastbound traffic from the interstate to here?
You mean westbound?
No.
Or eastbound? Okay.
Eastbound, you know, from the interstate going all the way back towards town there and just to get people off the interstate without having to get in these two lanes of traffic and then maybe.
I believe that's what we've been working towards all along Medical Center, is adding a third lane. a third lane. And so as the developments have been coming in, we've been making it a right turn lane that could eventually be turned into an actual lane.
If we, if we don't allow the turn lane now, and the, the one that we're talking about, the one that's in question here, is that something that they can come back later to us and say, can we put a, can we put an ingress right here later? I mean.
I mean, yeah, it could if we ever solve the, when we get the Asbury.
Right.
Problem solved, then it won't be as, it won't be, it wouldn't be a big as concern as it is right now. Right now, the biggest concern is the Asbury. We already have such a high accident rate and stuff there that we don't want to add to the problem.
I'd probably not want to do anything that added to the problem, or that you guys thought added to the problem. That'd be, I mean, I, just, as bad as that is right now, until we get that fixed.
White.
Matt, did you want to tell your story? And I mean your story.
Make it sound so dirty. Matt Taylor from SEC. So I think that Ms. Green, Ms. Emerson, did a good job explaining some of our past conversations there. I had some of the same questions and confusion whenever those concerns were expressed to myself, as, and my client did as well. And so we've met multiple times on the project, and finally met with Mr. Griffith, I think, middle of last week, and I was introduced to this, the Kimley Horn drawing. And so, and part of the reason that we feel so strongly about getting an access on the Medical Center is, if you'll notice, the orientation of the site, the pumps are really away from Silo Hill. And so, obviously, we think that is going to be a big part of our business, and that is going to draw a lot of cars in and out. We're trying to create a very walkable development, you know, that's a big part of the gateway, it's a big part of our site, it's a big part of this campus. And so, if we don't have that access, and we have our pumps to the west of the C-Store, that causes every car that comes in here to have to go through this center part where there's supposed to be more pedestrian activity. That is one of our main concerns. And so, that's why it's still on the plan. That's why we feel so strongly about it. If we can flip-flop those buildings, then our concern and our strength of, you know, our major concern there goes away. We have, I serve many masters, it's my client, you all, staff, and multiple departments of staff. And so, obviously, Ms. Green is very protective of aesthetics, as she should be in the gateway, and so that is why the orientation is the way it is right now. And so, you know, we feel like that the buildings we've proposed could go either direction, and serve and fulfill what the gateway wants with the aesthetics of the C-Store and the pumps. We're happy to leave the access where it is today. We've worked very hard on this design with Ms. Green. We think that by us extending this right turn lane, it's being very consistent with what this board and staff has requested and required over the past 15 years that we've been out here, which is build right turn lanes along your frontage, so we have this future lane, and basically have a six-lane section whenever development is done. So we think we're being very consistent in what we've proposed right here. We've even offered to move that access further to the west, so that it gets out of the improvement area, whenever that is done in the future, if it is. I don't think, right now, there's any schedule for that improvement that you see there, or any commitment for that improvement that you see there. So, I think there's multiple solutions here, and we would like some guidance. I hope I've expressed our concern, why we want that access, why we think it's necessary, why we think it's important, but we're very flexible in how we get to a resolution.
Matt, on the same token of coming in, the cars getting to the pumps from Silo Hill, am I, am I seeing this right, that they won't be able to go back out? I mean, the, the way that you're going to exit this place, if you come in here, is going to be the same way you're talking about entering it?
That's right. And so, we would double the, not hardly double, but everybody would have to come through and out, and that's why that, that's why we feel so strongly about that. And I think when we get to architecture, you'll see, you know, this, this gas canopy, Ms. Candace here has done an excellent job making it probably the nicest gas canopy that I've seen in the city. Her and Ms. Green worked very diligently on a lot of detail on this. I, you know, I, I do not think it would be a detriment to have it closer to the intersection, and that would help solve a lot of our concern here.
Where's the liquor store?
It's on the back part, it's on the bigger building. Yes, sir, on the western, so it's going to be in the lower right-hand of the site. And we think that's going to be a, you know, that, that's something you don't see anywhere else out here, and as a, I'm sure you can relate to this, Mr. Little Lance, as a traveling ballplayer's kid, it's going to fill out this campus very well, I think, so.
You're going to talk about my desire for the liquor store.
A long day at the ball field. I'll speak for myself there, Mr. Little Lance. A long day at the ball field, sometimes.
So you're saying that if you flop the building and the canopy, you have no need for the right turn lane?
Yes. And to keep in mind, the building is what you're going to see first as you come off the interstate, if you do that. Today, the canopy is. And so, I think the canopy's important regardless, architecture's important regardless. I think that we can still fulfill those goals. We're happy to, either way, if we leave it the way it is today, we, we would really want the access on Medical Center for that reason.
And I think, do you all feel staff, I guess, thank you, Mr. Taylor, and I'm sure we'll have more questions. I mean, that, if you have this type of development on this corner, that it makes sense to just have the one-way in and out off of Silo Hill Lane for all of this, all of this traffic in and out of that site.
I think, as staff, we do think that it makes sense to have the one access on Silo Hill Lane. I will say, we, you know, the gateway does have a certain standard aesthetic review process, but also of importance is, this is the gateway to the gateway. When you get off the interstate, this is the first lot you see, sets the tone, so I have been cautious of anything that comes before you on this lot, because it's changing the vision. The vision here was a hotel that fit within the campus, and so now it's a 10,000 square foot liquor store, a gas station, a C-Store restaurants. And so, I tasked the applicants with coming up with something creative and high quality, but then also, you know, the image, when you're coming into Murfreesboro, I don't want it to be like giant gas station, liquor store, what are you even seeing? And I think Ms. Schreiber, when she comes up, and she'll describe what she's done for you, I think that the canopy does look good, and I think she's, she's done a lot of work on it, and trying to, she's trying to do a modern approach to how buildings look, but then also keep those traditional aesthetics. The design is different, and I think we probably should go into that and look at that, because of course, you'll need to make your recommendation at the end. You know, I was, Nashville has McDougal's, and of course, images of giant McDougal's run in my head, and I don't want that, like, right at the entrance of the gateway, but I don't think that's where they're going now. I think we've been working for months on this project, and they've gone in a direction where that's not really where you are, but I think you can see how I wanted the tone to be right, because this was supposed to be a hotel, it was a hospitality campus, that's the size of the lot, that's the way everything's been set up, so with changing that vision, changing the uses, changing the gateway to the gateway, getting off the interstate, first thing you see, Chamber of Commerce on your left, and on your right, this, wanted to make sure that it was compatible, and it did meet our standards or expectations, it was high quality. And, you know, we have major materials in our community that have old gas stations, you know what they look like after a certain amount of time, and we have older liquor stores, and we, so part of that quality design is making sure whatever's here stands the test of time, because although proposed today is a 10,000 square foot liquor store, it could be a furniture store in the future or something else. So we want it to translate really easily, and also fit into the fabric of the area. So, yeah, it, it's been a lot of work, but I think that Candace Schreiber, the architect, is up for the challenge. It is a little different, it's a little out of my comfort zone, the architecture, but I think you might find it interesting, and I'm interested to see what your comments are, and if you are, okay, heading in that direction before making your, your recommendation, we can do that.
I still have another question.
Sure, yeah.
So as we, beyond just the, the right turn lane into this property, whether it's the extra one or the one on Silo Hill, now you want to leave the property, and.
And I would, I think Mr. Taylor talked about relocating buildings. I would ask that we see the plan first and see how that works, before you saying, yes, that's a good solution. I don't want to just, like, say, oh, that sounds like a compromise, let's move forward. Maybe if they can show us, Mr. Hudson always says, if it can't work on paper, it can't work in the field. A design that does work on paper, and so, I mean, I think that we'd be open to looking at something, the way the site's framed and the view sheds from the street and the interstate are all very important. So if that were, I know he presented that as an option, if that were something you were interested in, I would ask that you not just say, oh, that, that'll be a good solution, but we actually look at the plan to see if it works. And I know that Michael Hyman can, their team can do view, perspective, so that, that helps you know what it really looks like. And so I would just want to make sure that, before saying it's a great idea, we make sure it works out.
Okay. So how are people going to exit this site and go west on Medical Center Parkway?
They have to go south.
They're going to cross over three lanes of traffic and make a U-turn.
To go west?
Mm-hmm.
They have to.
Do you go whichever way is the interstate? Which way is that?
Yeah, that's not the.
We're circling around on Conference Center, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And take the light.
There you go. Okay. So they would come out of the site?
Mm-hmm.
Turn right, left, left, left.
That's the ideal way, for if you don't know.
If you're from out of town, you don't.
I think, I mean, there are off, people who sometimes, even with the landscape median, I've seen once or twice, go down the wrong way, but there will be a physical barrier in front of Silo Hill Lane, so that if they do pull out, there's a concrete, raised concrete island that they either have to find a way to drive over, or.
Yeah, I think they're going to have to cross those three lanes of traffic, get in the left turn lane, so they can U-turn at the light at Conference. That's what it would look like to me.
I was just going to add, you know, the great thing about the gateway is, you get two cracks at us, we're happy to bring back the other option, if y'all think it has some viability at the final design review and show you, yes, this works. I think that's actually the plan that we started with, and so, we're happy to do that.
I think certainly the uses here now draw a lot more traffic than this was anticipated, because you're talking about the access to the site and the turns, well, when we initially were reviewing the plat and the master plan, it was a hotel, which, you know, doesn't produce as many trips, so it, it wasn't as, like, frequent of maneuvers that, like, you're thinking, okay, well, I want to go to the, to the Taco Bell that's in the gas station, and so, like, all the people who want a Taco Bell have to make that same route, whereas hotels has, as I understand it, fewer people doing it. So it's definitely a change in, like, the vision and master planning for this area.
Can we, can, like, so, I guess part of what I'd want to see is nominalize that, you know, for us a little bit to, to understand, I mean, it seemed, it does seem like, I mean, I, I don't know whether or not there's twice as much traffic, or if it's 10 times more traffic, if you've got, you know, I'm assuming to get off at a restaurant and a gas station, and then get right back on the interstate is a different amount of traffic than somebody who's pulling in here to stay for the night, or a couple of nights, or whatever, but I don't know if that's twice as much. I mean, honestly, the more we talk about it, the more I kind of get a little anxious about adding, like, what you just said, you know, when they leave here, you know, who knows whether or not Siri or Google or whatever sends you around Conference Center to get out at the light, or if they send you down there to do a U-turn at Conference Center, like what she's saying.
Yeah.
And then we're right here in the same position, except you don't have Asbury, so there is a big difference, you know, right there in front of that one, but you've still got to get across all the traffic and get turned around, it's a U-turn into a crowded place. I mean, that whole area right there just may not be suited for people coming in and out of the interstate, if that number is three, four, five, six times more than what we would expect with the original vision, I just don't know what that number really looks like.
Any of our staff engineers know the difference that it would be from a hotel to 5,000 square feet of retail restaurants, C-Store?
Maybe if we add that to the list of, maybe look at what the other design would be versus that number.
So I've not done that comparison, but what I would say is that this may add some trips from the interstate, but it may also reduce trips up and down Medical Center Parkway, because we're adding extra restaurants, we're adding some of the destinations at this location that you would not have to leave this campus for, and so there is, there's a trade-off at the, at the location. So, you know, it's whatever somebody's in the mood for, you know, is there a Mexican joint here, is it, you know, whatever this is, and so it's a different, you're, you're trading some trips somewhere, whereas if this was a hotel, you have to go somewhere else on Medical Center Parkway, and so there, there is a difference. I would have to look and see about interstate-generated trips, counsel them.
It just makes me curious, I mean, for, to a certain extent, I'm sitting here wondering why we'd even have Silo Hill coming all the way out.
Well, it's because there was, Conference Center Boulevard was set with the location of Embassy Suites, and then whenever you look at the depth between Conference Center and the interstate, there was too much depth to make it not have a connection out there. And so, that was, you know, determined 2006, yes, we're going to do an access out there.
All right.
And, you know, I would say, you know, as far as which way Google routes you, Google's routing you around Silo Hill, otherwise, we would have more problems with Holiday Inn, with people leaving the hotel there than, you know, than you do today. You're going to have the exact same problem there than, as you would with anybody.
I don't know, actually, I think people at Holiday Inn are a little bit more likely just to juke right out there to Conference Center, it just seems like, but I, look, whatever, I'm.
They did stay at a Holiday Inn the night before, so.
They're definitely going to Conference Center drive to the light.
Okay.
Good point. I got it.
It was softball.
I got it.
So we're on initial design review, and we know that we have some further questions and decisions to make regarding the access in and out of this property, so let's go ahead and look at the actual design, and see what other comments we might have to add for that, since obviously, we are going to have to see this one again, and there will not be an initial and a final design approval on this, at this meeting, I would take it.
So, usually, technically, the initial design review isn't to talk about site plan, site plan approval doesn't come with initial, it comes later, but when we have, like, a big issue, I wanted to bring it to light, so that we could talk about it early and address it later, but ordinarily, the site plan elements are shown as a courtesy at initial, and really, the focus is on architecture. Unfortunately, we just went on our phone and Google mapped directions, and they made it, the Google said to do the U-turn, Kathy, so.
Yes.
I think, I stand corrected, your route is probably the way that the internet tells us to go, hopefully, people are smarter than the internet.
But just do the initial design review part, and we can see where we go from there.
I'll pass the board around.
Okay.
When you look at the plans, they're identified as Buildings One and Buildings Two. The, let me pull up my images here. Not my images, their images. So the building is a little bit different than what we see out there, and so I asked Candace to be able to present the project to you and show you the elements of the plan and how they're addressing the comments that we have. It does have, they are all one-story, but they are incorporating various heights to add interest in the, in the design, and I did want to zoom in on the canopy, because it was brought up, it's really, like, compared to the other structures, nominal, but you can see that they've got, of course, their brick columns and finestrations and brackets and a pitched roof to try to add interest to what is really just a gasoline canopy. roof to try to add interest to what is really just a gasoline canopy. And I think they've done a good job of that as well. But, um, the materials do fit within the palette that the zoning ordinance say, uh, need to be, or it needs to be in the gateway design overlay district. We also have a requirement that the architecture be compatible. And so, this one is a bit different than what's out there, but what isn't constructed is a Mexican restaurant that you approved that's right adjacent to this property. And I think the architecture for that's a little bit different than what's out there. And so, if and when that gets constructed, they do have, uh, they can pull the permit any day, they just haven't pulled it yet. Um, this, the, the design may make a little bit more sense, but I did want her to have an opportunity to describe all the work that they put into this and the perspectives and the views and really what you're going to see from the different elevations. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for having us today and thank you for listening to what we have to say. I'll take this off, so I'm a little muffled. Candace Shriver, H. Michael Hyman Architects. I'm really pleased to present this project. It's not like a regular gas station, it's a cool gas station. Thank you. Soft laugh. So, we've really kind of taken and drawn on a lot of the kind of more traditional forms and materials and massings within the North Church neighborhood and the gateway, you know, as a whole. We've kind of, in the larger retail center, we've had more independent elements on the sides, like you see in other, um, properties on the gateway infilled with more repetitive bays. I have some images to show you throughout the gateway as well, where we've taken inspiration. We've taken planes of the building kind of interacting to create a really, um, human-scale and delightful, playful experience where our bases are not only just different materials, but they're different sizes and scales, so you really experience the building. And we followed the, kind of, the general color palette of more tans and browns and then brought in a couple more, um, modern elements, as you see these metal accents on the building, which account for less than 10% of the overall materials. Here you'll see the C-Store and small retail, um, elevation, the north elevation faces Medical Center Parkway. It acts as a symbolic entrance, not a physical entrance, through the hierarchy of the symmetry of the building. But then our east and west elevations have the physical entries and address the current You'll see that this building, while it is a gas station, it, it almost reads more as a small retail or office building, something that would be really rather dignified in its presentation to the entry of the, the gateway of the gateway, as we've been calling it. And then, as you see earlier, as Margaret Ann pointed out and so kindly complimented me on our gas station canopy, we have added, um, lots of interest with the columns being in different dimensions, as well as adding the bracketry and the cast stone and brick And then I'm happy to show you a few, um, other buildings that we've looked at within the North Church Settlement, um, and then in relation to our scale to the adjacent proposed Mexican restaurant, La Strohas. This building here, and I have, this building here, I also have, um, a couple copies that I can pass around. Do you want to put my Vanna? No. This is at the corner of Silo Hill Lane and Gresham Park Drive. It has a similar, um, nice ACM kind of eyebrow occurring, um, and then here on it, some of its main elements, the base of the building is articulated through brick, um, pattern laying, which is another element that we have attributed, um, within our design. This building here is at, um, 3053 Medical Center Parkway, two blocks down, just on the other side of what would be the La Strohas restaurant. It has independent elements on either end. The center is articulated with these four-inch bump-out columns and we utilize a similar, um, strategy on the middle section here. Speaking to the hospitality-ness of the campus, um, we've kind of mimicked some of the bracketry and then the cast stone occurring on the Holiday Inn, which is our direct neighbor. And then for scale, this gray mass to the side is the height of the La Strohas, um, which is 25 foot and a half. And then the adjacent C-Store Retail is 24 foot and eight. So, we're right in line, kind of with, in size. And I'm happy to address any other questions or comments. I'll flip through a couple of these 3D renderings. The bottom left you'll see is the kind of view at Silo Hill Lane and Medical Center Parkway. So, it really provides a nice presence, uh, which is how we've oriented the buildings and the gas canopy to be towards I-24, um, so that as you're leaving Murfreesboro, you get this nice image of this building and this life of the campus where people might be, you know, shopping or eating. And then a couple other views. Uh, one, as you would be entering from the proposed turn, the proposed right end between the C-Store and the gas station canopy, um, and then just a couple others to see as well.
Questions or comments regarding the architecture? Any suggestions or concerns in that regard? Do you want to pass along on initial design review so we can see changes on the final
Are we just talking about the...
We're talking about the architectural.
Just the architecture still?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I don't have any on architecture.
I think the architectural looks very nice.
Thank you.
Yes, we did. So, I think everything will revolve around how, you know, more, more of the layout, um, potential changes with traffic flow and things like that.
Can I ask one more question about that, Matt? On the traffic flow, when you were talking about people coming in off Silo Hill, just it's too cluttered for me to really pick it out in this, in this, uh, you know, whatever I call architectural-looking drawing here, uh, the, yeah, the engineering-type drawing. So, when, when somebody comes in, let's say the, the right turn lane doesn't exist, for, for the example, they're coming in off the interstate, they take a right on Silo Hill, and you're saying they have to go through the whole property, you know? So, really, they're just going behind that, in-between the buildings. They don't have to come all the way down to the south of the, of the building too and loop all the way around. They can cut right through there where that, is there going to be an entrance on the Silo Hill, right where that blue line is?
Yes, that is the only entrance and that's where all the parking between the two uses go. And that, that's really our hesitancy there, councilman, is that's where everybody here, uh, that's what activity's going to be going on, is in that blue area right there, if you're parking on the site. And then this over here is a major attractant.
I mean, could...
And that's why I'm saying if I can take that and put it here and, you know, move this beautiful architecture around, you know, I think we even talked to staff, if we could do that, we'd just move another entrance up here, keep this one where it is, and we have no issue with that whatsoever. And it keeps people going to the gas pumps, the heavy traffic use away from the rest of the site. And I think it still achieves all the goals that we want to achieve out here.
Well, I got a chicken and egg question for us, I guess, which is, you know, do we, I mean, there's a certain part of me that says, hey, I'm, I'm cool with looking at what that alternative looks like. It does look like the architecture's okay. I certainly agree with the idea or can, can comprehend the idea of seeing the building first when you get off instead of the gas pumps. I mean, I get all of that. I guess I would, so I would agree with seeing that before I wanted to say it was okay. I think the chicken and the egg question is, you know, whether or not we're discussing as a planning commission, whether or not changing the vision and all of that is the appropriate thing to do on this piece of property, or if that's even something we even talk about or vote on or whatever.
If I can speak to that. So, the vision out here is hospitality campus. The only, so a hospitality campus can be many things. You see it already out here. So, you see hotels, you see residential, you see restaurants, you see, you know, other services. There's probably a nail salon through there. I think there's a, uh, a shake place, a healthy shake place. Um, and, you know, there's even a, a retail furniture store out there. And so, the only reason this site was looked at as a hotel was that was the first person here. And so, I think this still stays in the vision of a hospitality campus. And all the uses we're proposing here are still allowed uses in the gateway. And so, we're not proposing to change a use. We're, we think we're very complimentary to the overall vision of the campus. And so...
I mean, crux behind the question was that, how many X are we on the, the traffic expectation and what impact does that have on, I guess, maybe our worst intersection in town? I mean, one of the worst three intersections we've got where Asbury comes out and, you know, we all gripe about what 96, you know, Old Fort and, and I-24 and Casey Lane looks like right there because we've got those, those ingress-ingress so close to the interstate. You know, we all know that's another one that fits that. And I'm just sitting here thinking, do we really want to crank it up if it is 6X amount of traffic to go this route versus what it's originally, whatever, looked at? Certainly, I hope you can understand that gives me a little pause too. I mean, and I don't know if I should be making that decision. I'm just trying to figure out what impacts it's going to have and it probably doesn't seem good if it's that big of a difference.
I'll add another, and I know it's a, it's an okay use, it's just a statement. How many other cities can you think of that in the, the very first thing you come to in their gateway is a 10,000-square-foot liquor store? Like, think about it, you get off of Cool Springs Boulevard, you don't see a 10,000-square-foot liquor store. You get off on Knoxville West Park, you don't see a 10,000-square-foot liquor store, the very first thing you see. Just, I don't have anything against liquor stores, just, that's the first vision somebody sees when they drive into our gateway.
I think part of the, even, even if we were to just, like, pretend Asbury wasn't an issue, I do think we've still got, you know, things to address in regards to the traffic in and out of this site, which is true whether it's this use or any use. I mean, it's just something we've got to figure out for this site, what's going to be the best way, um, to access, uh, this from a safety standpoint, from ease, ease of access to make it where people want to get in and out of the site. I, I do think, you know, initially, one of the things out in the gateway, as much as I, you know, absolutely loved everything that's out in the gateway, if you needed to stop and get gas, you were kind of out of luck out there for a long time. Uh, so, we do have a couple of alternatives for that now. So, I'm not saying I'm, I'm against that. Um, you know, just in my initial look at this in our discussion today, I, I am leaning towards the, uh, the footprint, the layout, the way it is now with the gas stations more towards the interstate and the nice pretty buildings toward the rest of our Medical Center Parkway. But, uh, I'm still, you know, I guess, most concerned about just the access in and out of the site. And I'm not sure, you know, and like I say, leave Asbury Lane even totally out of it. We've just got, um, we've got to figure out what would be the best way in and out of this site, um, no matter really what the use is on, on this property.
Even if it weren't a liquor store starting out, it could, at least then, and it could be a liquor store on down the road. So, that's, could happen one way or the other. It may not start out as one, so that's one thing to think about. I'm with Kathy on the access to the site. I think it's a, a lot to pull around to one side only for one inn and it's, it'll, I could see it bottlenecking with, again, safety and pedestrians coming across, so I do have a concern about that. And could you, for, my purposes probably only because I think everybody else sees it, can you run your little pen of your driving away from town toward the interstate, where that U-turn risk is? Right there?
Finger must not be as warm as some people's.
Is, is that specifically where the, the acceleration lane is going to be coming out of Asbury, the, the anticipated acceleration lane? Is that pretty much where, so it's going to be right in that same spot?
Yeah.
And if they missed Conference Center Drive and they still want to get to the gas station, are you not going to try to make that U-turn whether the right turn lane is there or not?
So, I have a fairly insensitive statement that I use and I cannot fix stupid. I cannot design around stupid. So, it is very possible that, yes, they would still do that.
Yeah. I mean, at that point, I think, I need gas. I thought I was going to be able to turn in right here. Here's the point where I can make a U-turn, whether I know that right turn lane is there. I'm just trying to get back to the gas station. I don't, I guess I'm not understanding if there or not, why it pushes somebody to U-turn more.
I agree. I don't think the right turn lane has anything to do with the people doing a U-turn. If I'm driving down the road and I see a gas station there and I can do a U-turn and get there, I'm going to do it, whether I know that...
Because it's your last chance before you get on the interstate, right there.
I think what their point is though, once you make the U-turn, you're going to try to jet straight across all the lanes of traffic to get into that right turn lane with only 50 feet to get across there instead of coming on down to have a little more time to merge, merge, merge to the turn lane into Silo Hill.
Well, anytime you make a U-turn, you're having to go across the two lanes of traffic that you're U-turning around, you know? You can't make that.
Most of the time. You could be going to Forbes, you just missed it.
Yeah, and that's the last option.
I got, I do have a question about the barrier idea and this, this could actually, I guess it could potentially fix it. If there's going to be a barrier on the right, if, if I'm coming out of Asbury Lane, I make my left turn and there's a barrier on my right to keep me from going over into the lane of traffic, they couldn't get over to the right to get into the right turn in either? If it's a real barrier like poles?
The, where you see this green?
I don't see it, but...
Okay.
Where?
This, when it looks like...
That doesn't help me. Show me on the real...
Oh, I see your color blind. Okay, I'm sorry. Let me to call you out.
Where is it up there?
It's where there's going to be a raised concrete island. And so, oh, man, this makes, you're a challenge, okay.
That's it?
Uh, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about. What's that right there?
A raised concrete island.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I know we all have experiences doing U-turns, but what, we're looking at this in the context, there's literally one of the most difficult to manage or worse intersections in the city of Murfreesboro that we're keep trying to do some short-term improvements until we have a long-term improvement. So, when we're looking at this, we're looking at this in context to, it's not good now and we, like, really concerned about whatever happens here because it's so significant and it's presented so many challenges. And on the other side of the interstate, um, we've had to do some improvements as well in front of the Zaxby's because there've been fatalities there. So, we're concerned about the interstate.
The point is, it doesn't matter whether there's a right turn in right there or they come on down to Silo Hill Road. They're still going to, if they're going to make the U-turn, they're going to make the U-turn.
I agree.
Can you explain the traffic signal again that's dropped in? What's...
I think Michelle has to explain the traffic signal. All I know is there's that little image right there.
Temporary thing?
It doesn't change, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
It is designed to be temporary until we can get the permanent solution for Asbury Inn. So, what it is, is a, um, stop condition for this traffic. How are y'all drawing here? Okay, so, these people are going to stop, but these, and, good lord, these people have to stop so that these people, there we go, can get into this lane and go.
Okay.
I can't make this draw. I'm going to use my fingernails.
Check out this scenario real quick.
Check out this scenario real quick. So this is, I mean, you see probably the, the right turn in that they're talking about is probably just shy of where her line ends right there. You know, if you just look straight down. So if that concrete barrier is going to come all the way to right there, if people make a U-turn, you think that's where it is? I think it's on farther down.
If they make a U-turn, yeah, they're going to go beyond that. They're going to get around that little barrier.
So if it's, if it's right there, that means they're going to come to a stop in the acceleration lane to then try to turn straight down into the, that's the difference. I mean, it doesn't keep anybody from U-turning. It just, so, but, but I don't think the U-turn is necessarily the problem, especially if there's going to be a barrier. The problem is the barrier is going to carry them all the way down to exactly where they're supposed to be accelerating to merge into, into the traffic. They're going to be stopping to make a hard right turn.
That's what I said earlier.
Into that right turn. I mean, that, that would be the biggest, I think, they're going to be stopping in the acceleration lane to turn across two lanes of traffic into the right turn in.
I would almost rather them do the U-turn to try to get in safely over here than take that hard right right there.
I think that's what they're saying.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing it right.
I think what I, I don't have the dimension, I don't have the exact point that that.
Matt, we need the drawing showing the proposed with the actual current position.
Yeah, if I could get, if I get Kim Lee Horn.
Waiting on where it is. We need something where it is.
If I can get Kim Lee Horn's drawing, I'm happy to overlay that. We're happy to locate our entrance before the end of the concrete island. That's whenever it gets.
If, if you own the property, right? I mean, if it's that far back.
It's detention plot. Well, so I know that my property goes to, basically this, see this pole right here? My property basically stops right there. And so the island, and so I own all the way back. So I know that part. And we're happy to locate.
Okay, I think, I think what, if, if we could, I, I think we need to maybe, maybe we're not ready for this initial design review yet.
So what I would like is, if you're happy with architecture, I'd just, I'd like to bring you back to options at the final design review and the site plan. If you don't like those, like Margaret had said, the initials really for architecture and the finals for the site anyway. So I'll bring those options back. If you're not happy then, we'll go back and do something else. So we would like to keep moving forward though, if you're, if you're happy with architecture. Sounded like you were.
So not to prolong this conversation, but I got another comment that has nothing to do with what we've talked about, okay?
Good. Go ahead.
So when, because I drive by it every day and it kind of irritates me. So the new liquor store that's on Greenland and Old Las Cassas, you with me so far? So I was really excited about the look of that building. And then all at once, signs go up. Brews, smokes, liquor, okay?
Okay.
So I don't know who the sign person here is, but that's not what, we're talking about what we want for the gateway. We don't want, when you first come off the interstate, smokes, brews. So is there anything that we can do to keep that from happening as part of this application?
As a part of this initial design review, site plan review, I don't, I'm not aware of anything we can do to keep that from happening. I understand, and I drive by it every day like you, you do as well, our sign ordinance says that no more than 25% David, of the window can be covered in a...
This is not the window.
Oh, you're talking about the banners?
This is on the top of the building. It's fixed letters.
With liquor stores, I find the challenge, if you require real windows, they put racks against the windows and you're looking at the back of racks.
They've done that also, but that's not mine.
Then you add a spandrel glass, but then it looks fake.
But no, this is on the top of the building. So they're using those, those things as the verbiage on the building.
Are there attached signs?
Yes.
They're within, the ones out on Greenland are within the sign ordinance allowable. You know, they're, they're not dirty words, they're not bad.
Correct.
So it's the signage of a product and it's, that's legitimate signage. And I, I hear your point.
The big one. There?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so under these windows here, the reason the windows are so pulled up is because we've already allowed for shelving in that area. Because we are also designing the interior of the store. So you will not see the backs of any bookcases.
Yeah, that, that's not my, I get what you're saying, but my main issue is the verbiage that's on the, that's on the building. That's kind of what I was going with when I was saying, that's the first thing you see. Yeah. And if, I mean, if there's nothing we can do about it, there's nothing we can do about it. But I, I wanted to bring it up before we get too far down the road here.
Teresa Stevens is our subject matter expert. She's not here this afternoon. We didn't invite her, but yeah, I see it. And the gateway has, of course, its own set of restrictions with signage. However, I have, I think, there, like, if you, at the corner of Med Center and Thompson Lane, you can see the, the posts in the ground and the banner signs kind of across it. So that leads me to think that some sort of signage like that would be allowed. The content, I mean, it could say dog or, or bruise, and we wouldn't have anything to say about that. I can, though, have a, something prepared when we come back.
Okay.
And that's going to be visible from the interstate, right?
This building is visible from the interstate, mostly because the trees that ran along the interstate were taken out with the Good Friday tornado. I have a ortho.
Ms. Green, is a lot to the left or west available? Is it a, another developable piece of property?
It's a detention, a shared.
So while we're just talking about scenarios, with that said, if we're having a temporary light there, is there any reason at all we can't use the light and have a road that turns in at that point rather than a right turn?
Here?
Not like, not even, but even.
Can they come over? Oh, I see.
A more controlled access point into the site. I'm just, if we're going to ask for options, let's think of all of the options.
I don't.
I mean, it's a troubled area.
Next meeting.
Okay.
This is T dot right away. Or it's right away.
I just had to ask, because, I mean.
Okay. All right, so we have a lot of discussion on this property. And right now, we have up for us the initial design review. And so if we have any other comments or questions, I think that the development team certainly understands all our concerns and everything that we might want to see the next time that we see this back if we approve the initial design review today. So any other comments, questions, we need to make sure they know and understand before we might make a motion on today's item.
Just to clarify, a motion that we would have today would just be sending this to the final stage.
Back again for final design review, correct? Ms. Green?
Of course, the motion can be as you wish, but it is required to come back for final design and site plan approval.
And it takes a motion to get it there?
It has to be approved on initial before it can go, come to final. So you can, of course, defer initial and then have initial and final in the future. You can approve on initial and at final decide to approve, defer, or deny.
So we can do initial and final in the same meeting?
Not with this, only with the small projects. This one has to have initial first and then come back again with final and site.
And you asked, and could we do initial and final next time if we defer?
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Could I, could we do initial and then turn around and do final right afterwards?
Not with this project, not with this type of project.
The initial is just covering the architecture of what we have. It's not saying where the building's going to sit. It's just the architecture.
So, yeah, the, the way it was set up and how it's written in the zoning ordinance is that initial design review is to provide the applicants with the opportunity to engage in discussion and get feedback and work on the design and architecture of the building before presenting the final plans to you. So everything presented today is preliminary. And they would show up the details. And when they come back to final, they would have those details worked out. And, and so it's really to create a space for dialogue that doesn't exist with other projects.
I think we certainly accomplished that.
I appreciate it. It's, it's hard work and everybody's grateful for your service.
I'll just say this. I'm, I'm willing to, to get it to the stage that we need to talk about it. But I, I'm going to just say for everybody involved, I don't want it to be construed as, I think everything's okay and, and like, I'm going to vote for it in final. I mean, it's still, to me, needs a lot of work. And I need to know about what those differences are in traffic for me personally. And would like to see the layout different and all that kind of stuff. So just kind of saying, I don't mind getting it to final if we need to get it there, if that's what we want to do, or, you know, that'd be my vote. But that's in no way saying I think it's okay with the turn lane. I don't think the turn lane's okay yet. I don't think changing the design is okay yet. I don't think any of that's okay yet in my mind. But I'll get it to final if that helps the process.
I see the client's representatives nodding their head that they completely understand that and that.
All right.
Is that a motion?
Any other comments?
Anybody have anything else? I'll make a motion.
Second.
And that was a motion to approve initial design review subject to any and all staff comments.
With, with several asterisks.
Yes, yes.
And we had a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks very much to everyone for all their help getting us through that. Appreciate it, and we'll look forward to seeing it back again. So we're going to move on to Plats and Plans. We have three items here. The first is Farmhouse Downs, Section One, a master plan amendment for University Villas and Lyon Family Subdivision Master Plan, and a preliminary plat for 135 lots on 94.94 acres, zoned RS6, located along Lyons Farm Parkway, south of John Bragg Highway. Front Street Partners is the developer. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon again. As you stated, this is the master plan amendment and preliminary plat for the University Villas and Lyon Family Subdivision. The master plan was amended to adjust the lot layout due to some additional wetland areas that were discovered on the property. They also added an additional park and to also show the connection to Chandler Place. It would be an additional connection to Chandler Place. The construction of Chandler Place, I just want to read the comment here so, so you're aware of when it will be constructed and in what order. Says the construction of Chandler Place roadway on the property identified as Lot Two of the Aspen Heights subdivision shall occur as a part of Section One of the Farmhouse Downs subdivision. Construction plans for Section One shall be revised to show this roadway construction. This roadway construction shall connect to the existing Chandler Place roadway east of South Rutherford Boulevard. Construction of the roadway must be completed prior to the signing of the Section One final plat. In the event Section One is broken into phases, the construction of Chandler Place shall be constructed prior to the signing of the final plat for the last phase in Section One. In no event shall any plat related to Section Two be signed before the roadway construction is completed. Staff is also still working with applicant on the design and location of appropriate mail services. And we request that this be subject to staff review and approval with the construction plans for the development. Otherwise, the, the plan is in good order and we request any approval be subject to staff comments.
Any questions or comments regarding this master plan amendment and/or the preliminary plat?
So I know there was discussion between the developer and the city with respects to the connection to Chandler Place. So I just, so the applicant is understanding this? Okay. Thank you.
Just so the record shows, I believe that was Mr. Chad Gilbert nodding his head.
Thank you. Okay. Any other?
There's no other comments. I'll make a motion. Will you approve? Subject to all staff comments.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Another one on the same, we've got the Farmhouse Downs, Section Two, preliminary plat for 125 lots on 94.93 acres, zoned RS6 and RS10, located along Lyons Farm Parkway, south of John Bragg Highway. Front Street Partners is the developer.
Thank you. Again, this is a continuation of the Farmhouse Downs subdivision. If this, if there was not a master plan amendment before you today, this would actually have been eligible to be on the consent agenda. It's generally in good order, and we request that any approval be subject to staff comments.
Any questions on the Section Two preliminary plat?
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item C under our Plats and Plans is Circle K Site Plan for 5,333 square foot convenience store and fueling station on 2.0 acres, zoned by industrial located at the southeast corner of New Salem Highway and Middle Tennessee Boulevard. Circle K Northeast America Developer. Ms. Kerr, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Members of the planning commission have stated this is a site plan review for 5,333 square foot convenience store gas station located in the southeast corner of New Salem Highway and Middle Tennessee Boulevard. This property is zoned LI, which the proposed use is allowed within the LI zone. The site is double frontage and has a frontage along New Salem Highway as well as Middle Tennessee Boulevard. New Salem Highway will have a full, New Salem Highway will have a right-in, right-out access only, and Middle Tennessee will have a full access drive. Both New Salem and Middle Tennessee are major arterial roadways. The proposed building is a two-story structure, which is approximately 23 feet tall and is oriented along New Salem Highway. Additional facade treatments have been added to the Middle Tennessee Boulevard facade, and the building exterior materials are nichihav stone and brick veneer. The roof is flat with raised parapets to create height variations. And the mechanical equipment will be on the rooftop and screened by the parapets. And I'm available to answer any questions you have, may have about the architecture or the site plan. And there is a representative for the developer today to answer questions as well.
Okay. Questions do we have regarding this site plan? Can I just ask, it looks like both of these accesses are off of the actual lot itself.
They are, this is on a, let me go back, this is a new subdivision plat that has been recorded and it is going to be an actual, that, there is a flag lot area that comes out onto the Middle Tennessee accessway. And then there is a shared access easement that is going to come off of New Salem, New Salem Highway into this development that will also have a drive that will go eventually to the rear of the property where another access will go behind this convenience store. If you also notice on this drawing, there is Kilbronn and Drive eventually that will be placed on this property by the developer. And then there will be a signalized intersection at that location.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Can you tell me just what's the height of the red banding around the canopy, which of course looks great otherwise? Just one minute. It's deceiving to me sometimes to see it right there. And I'm sure those little numbers right there. Tell me how tall that is, but.
I don't know how to work this, Matthew. I scroll in. To the top of the canopy, 20, 20 foot six inches. To, I mean, to the top of the banding. The top of the roof is 20. The top of the roof is 24 foot, 3 inches.
Could I ask you just kind of a quick question about that? Is it, if this was in a GDO, would that be allowed in GDO?
The particular canopy?
Yeah, yeah.
They are, they have, in the GDO, it is limited to 8 inches in the GDO. And they've also, they were asking about, this banding would be a lighted band, and I did send the information to our sign administrator about that banding, knowing that that would not be allowed. And the canopy fascia, that is a comment, and of course, if this is, staff recommends any approval of the site plan be based upon staff comments. And Ms. Stevens did reply that the canopy fascia cannot be illuminated.
We're talking about initial design right now, right, on this?
This is the site plan.
The site plan approval.
Yeah, we're past, there's no initial and final, because we're out of the GDO.
Alright. It's not GDO, you know, personally, this probably is gonna be a substantial gateway into our town, and if they would be willing to go with something that was smaller and definitely not lit...
So, they can't do the lit? Is that what you said, Ms. Kerr?
We've already cleared, I mean, is that already a done deal?
Yes, that is a comment that is on the staff comments from Teresa Stevens. The canopy fascia cannot be illuminated.
Got it.
And it's prohibited to be used on a canopy.
Alright, I was having to scroll through all Farmhouse Downs stuff to get here. Sorry.
It should be on the second, oh, the first page of the staff comments at the bottom of the page.
And I'm not really sure how tall the red band is.
That's what I'm gonna try to do. 3 feet?
It's 3 feet.
It's 3 feet, according to Margaret Dean.
See, from, if you got 20 inches to the top of that canopy, and then 24, there's no way the red is 3 feet, and the top of that is 4. Well, I'll take that back. 3 feet and 4 feet.
Yeah.
3 feet?
Maybe.
I was just trying to extrapolate. Any other comments or questions regarding the site plan?
I mean, I get the whole banding thing, but, I mean, the only, the only area we have many restrictions with respect to the banding is the GDO, correct?
Outside the gateway, you can only have primary colors, Mrs. Carrie Curly. Color as a tertiary color, so it defines primary, secondary, tertiary. And I think that Ms. Kerr looked through the amount of colors used and probably determined that it fits the definition tertiary.
Yes, it does.
Okay. I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
One no. Motion passes. Alright, next, we are moving on to new business. Thank you, Ms. Kerr.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our first item under new business is a zoning application for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail to be rezoned from MU, GDO1 and GDO2, to PUD, CH, GDO1 and GDO2. This is Clary Park, and Heinz Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green, welcome back.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our first item of new business is a request for you to schedule a public hearing, and it's for an application titled Clary Park, and I know that each one of you are very familiar with the project. It, it's about 78 acres. It's located north of Medical Center Parkway, south of Wilkinson Pike.
What'd you say?
Earthquake.
Is it?
New Maverick boat.
It's like a sunball.
Yeah. Governor Lee.
It looks too far.
His helicopter.
City's governor, he has a helicopter.
Where would he land?
Where would he land?
Is he landing out front?
Who'd let a big bull with chili for lunch?
From...
That's a good...
Yeah.
It's a low-flying machine.
Thanks, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Councilman Martin assures us we're all safe.
Only came back in, so...
Yeah, my man. The rest of the building might be there.
It's like a couple times today.
Has it?
I don't know what, I mean, it happened once last week too, so I could feel it in my office. We were waiting for the fire alarm to go off, and it thought it was gonna be good.
Interesting.
Mr. Hulse and Mr. McKnight are checking on it.
Whatever's happening, nobody knows.
That was pretty amazing.
Would you like me to continue? And pretend?
For now, till it starts again, and then we'll, we'll keep going. So, I think, first off, you were gonna tell us what date were you gonna tell us? We're looking to schedule a public...
May 5th is gonna be our recommendation.
May 5th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The request for this PRD-NCH project was denied at City Council, and in our zoning ordinance, we have a section that deals with reapplication when denied. Essentially, it states that the same amendment may not be filed within 18 months of the date final action was taken on previous application, or the date is withdrawn unless such reapplication is initiated by the department commission or authorized by council. And we looked at this application, and it's, luckily, they're not in the room, but the Development Services Director and the Planning Director's opinion that the differences in the overall plan...
They're hiding somewhere. They've run for cover.
They're not coming back is kind of concerning. The differences between the overall plan and this application, the plan contained in the application rejected by council on October 22nd, 2020, are sufficient to exempt this plan from the 18-month limitation in the zoning ordinance. And they ask that the Planning Commission concur. In the alternative, if you do not concur, staff asks that the Planning Commission recommend that City Council authorize the consideration of the plan in accord with the provision of this section. So, that's to say that our, Mr. McKnight and Mr. Hulse are comfortable with this plan moving forward prior to the 18-month time limit, but you have options if you disagree. Of course, we can, we can go that route. During, are we okay? During the initial zoning application, it came to staff and Planning Commission, City Council's attention that a berm, landscape buffer berm that was committed to be installed was not. You'll be happy to know that there is a truck heading to Murfreesboro today with excavation equipment loaded on it, and Mr. Taylor will deliver to me a photograph of that equipment arriving on site to install the berm. Permit has been issued, equipment's en route, they've got a fuel card, and they are moving forward with that regardless of whatever happens here, so fulfilling that commitment that was made to you. The plan, of course, I've given background before, and I'll give you some more background at the Planning Commission public hearing, but the, what you're probably asking me now is what's different? And so, I have provided some charts and tables, trying to highlight and illustrate the differences in the 2020 version and version 2.0 or 2.21. The chart that I have on the screen now shows you the difference in the number of dwelling units initially proposed and proposed today. The plan last year had 1600 multifamily units. Today, they're proposing 488. The townhomes previously were 290, and today it's 182. What's new to this plan are the addition, or is the addition of 38 single-family detached lots, so houses, but they'll be on a horizontal property regime. And so, the difference, overall difference is 182 units less, and I think they'll wanna highlight that to you later, but I imagine that that would have been one of your questions leading into this, is what's happened. The density has gone down. They're still proposing, the apartments maintain a few thousand square feet of commercial in the apartments. They're also proposing the commercial highway lots along Medical Center Parkway, townhomes, and introducing the single-family detached. We have been working with the applicants on what can they do for the existing site, not only to meet our development standards, but to improve the situation, and I think that'll be something as well that Mr. Taylor would like to speak on as well. We, the city engineering and transportation department have reviewed and revised traffic study for the project. Of course, the numbers did go down because the density has gone down in this development, and, but we wanted the plan to reflect those changes. Now, since the plan was prepared, and today, the number went down even again, so they've reduced the number of units a couple times. So, the traffic study that's in your program, in your packet was the one from the time before, so it's got less density than 2020 plan, but not as few as we have today. We're aware of drainage concerns for the existing residents, and have asked the applicants to see and explore and work with staff and see if there's any way that they can do some nominal improvements on their project that can maybe make the quality of life better, and they're exploring those options as well. The future land use map did recommend that this area develop as a mixed use, and this would be consistent with the future land use map. We did ask the applicants to hold a neighborhood meeting, another neighborhood meeting, based on these changes, and they did. Ms. Kerr, Mr. McKnight, and I attended the neighborhood meeting April 6th at the Murfreesboro Fire Station 4 on a beautiful spring day unlike today, and it was well-attended with good questions, and I expect that this process will maintain having that interaction from the residents. So, it's our request that the Planning Commission consider this matter, schedule it for a public hearing on May 5th. We do have five or six outstanding comments, but we're confident that they'll be able to turn those around pretty quickly. As a matter of fact, Mr. Gunther, representing the applicant, has every day, I think, reaching out to me and coming up with ways to address those questions. I will say, I should have said, I guess I probably wanted to leave it to them, that they have, the architecture has changed from the initial submitted as well, and some of those concerns that we highlighted point by point by point, they've been able to address several of those. And so, they do have raised foundations on the front, and the buildings are more in line with what we would expect to see in this area. We have mentioned to them the being sure to have dispersed parking within the single-family attached townhome portion. It's a comment that was made on the project before, and I suspected it would continue to be important to you, and so those five or six comments that I mentioned were outstanding is they're looking at ways to incorporate that, not in a location that's so far away that nobody will use it, but dispersed within the site, and I think there are plenty of opportunity to do that, and they are continuing to work on that. I think they can speak to that as well. We also mentioned, wanted to review the garages that they're proposing in the single-family attached. All the detached houses have two-car garages, two-car driveways. The single-family attached is, has three different styles of like building groups, threes, fours, and fives. And so, in the three-unit buildings, they're proposing two two-car garages and one one-car garage. In the four-unit buildings, they're proposing two two-car, two one-car. And in the five, no more than two one-car garages, so three two-car and two one-car. What's different with this than some of the other townhomes we see with single-car garages is the driveways do have the width for two cars, because there's a difficulty with a single-car driveway and a single-car garage when you have multiple cars and you have to play some sort of Tetris to pull one car out to get another car in, and it's difficult. So, in this situation, in the alley where the parking is located, they do have driveways, even with the single-car garages where they're at least two-car wide, so you could park in a space and still be able to get in and out of the garage. So, they're proposing that to Planning Commission and City Council. And so, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Gunther or Mr. Taylor to the lectern to provide you some more details on the plan. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Matt Taylor from SCC. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I did wanna go through and highlight some of the changes from the 2020 plan that was before you to today's plan. I do wanna point out that there are two land plan options inside of your book, and so the base plan is what we've called Option A, and it is shown on page 12. And the difference between Option A and Option B, which is shown on 13, is in Area 7. And so, on Option A, which is what we would consider our base zoning, that area can only be developed for an office building from a time period from three years of the council approval, or after the council approval. It cannot be developed for the apartments in that three-year period, and so, we'd be pursuing office tenants during that time period. So, the numbers that Ms. Green indicated earlier were the apartments had decreased from 600 to 488. That 488 is if both those parcels develop as apartments. If the Area 7 is developed as an office building, which is what we hope, then that number's at 280 instead of 488. Townhomes, as Ms. Green said, those have decreased by 108, which is almost 40%. Went from 290 down to 182. And then, we've added 38 single-family homes in the development. We've lined those along Wilkinson Pike to be cohesive with the neighbor. We've also lined those along Willow Oak Trail, so that as you're driving through, you're seeing, you're seeing single-family homes in the heart of the development there. As Ms. Green said, our traffic numbers, traffic generation has gone down fairly significantly from the original plan because of our density decrease, and so, that, you know, in the morning time, it's about a 7 to 10% decrease is what our projections show, and the PM peak time, that's gonna be in the 18 to 20% decrease range. So, overall, our density decreases have went down about either 20 to 40%, depending on whether A or B develops out. As Ms. Green said, we did have a good neighborhood meeting earlier this month. I think it had about 20 to 25 participants. I felt like it was very well-received, having not been part of the previous neighborhood meetings on the project last year. I thought they asked good questions. They asked about, hey, can we get certain types of uses out here? And so, I felt like it was very well-received. Some of the other changes that we talked about or have made were townhome architecture. I know that was a big point of conversation, having sat through a couple of those meetings. We, since that time, spent a lot of time, went to West Haven and Berry Farms over in Franklin, and really took some inspiration from that architecture on the residential and pulled it back into this project. And so, you'll see that this architecture is less farmhousey, relies a lot less on cement board, a lot more on brick and stone, a lot of stacked porches you'll see in here, so a lot of interest here. We think that you'll be very happy with that. We carried that same architecture between the townhouses and the single-family detached, so that we will complement each other very well. We feel like that we've made improvements on the transportation plan. We did not take away any of our commitments from the first time, which is gonna build a continuous turn lane, sidewalk, street scape along Med Center, any signal improvements. We're gonna complete the connection through Willow Oak. We've sat down with staff and said, hey, we're gonna, we'll just build the turn lanes at West Park and Wilkinson Pike, and so that'd be a left turn lane into West Park for the residents there. We, since that time, spent a lot of time, went to West Haven and Berry Farms over in Franklin and really took some inspiration from that architecture on the residential and pulled it back into this project. And so you'll see that this architecture is less farmhousey, relies a lot less on cement board, a lot more on brick and stone, a lot of stacked porches you'll see in here. So a lot of interest here. We think that you'll be very happy with that. We carried that same architecture between the townhouses and the single-family detached so that we will complement each other very well. We feel like that we've made improvements on the transportation plan. We did not take away any of our commitments from the first time, which is going to build a continuous turn lane, sidewalk, street scape along Med Center, any signal improvements. We're going to complete the connection through Willow Oak. We've sat down with staff and said, hey, we're going to, we'll just build the turn lanes at West Park and Will, and Wilkinson Pike. And so that'd be a left turn lane into West Park for the residents there and a left turn lane into our site. And then also a new addition is our two turn lanes at Willow Oak and Wilkinson Pike, and we would anticipate those to actually be installed this fall if the project is completed. So that'd be with basically Phase 1 of the project and help traffic flow and operations of Wilkinson Pike. I know there was concerns on drainage. We've been working very hard on the drainage concerns here. We feel very confident we've got a plan that will work. Sit down with engineering as well as public works. City engineer yesterday went over that plan. They can speak for themselves, but I believe they're in agreement that our plan will protect Wilkinson Pike, prevent an over-topping that has been, that has occurred in the past to the west or to the east of West Park Drive there and not harm downstream. We have also reached out to the county. It appears to us there are some ditches located in the county that need some maintenance. Look like they've silted up or been filled in for various reasons over time. So we have made that ask or reached out. We'll continue to pursue that to try to get that ditch line reestablished for a couple of the neighbors on the east side of West Park Drive. And then as Ms. Green said, we have been working very diligently to get the burn permitted. We picked up the permit last week. The truck, I'm told the equipment was on the truck around 11 or 12 today, so I'm hoping it is on-site. I drove by yesterday, silt, they had everything staked in utilities marked, so they're actively pursuing that over the next couple of weeks slash months. So outside of that, I think that hit on all the big changes. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We feel like the project's gotten better since it was here last fall before you. With these improvements, we've worked very hard with staff, multiple meetings, multiple revisions, so we hope that you'll agree.
So Matt, you talked about this office area having a three-year, I'll call it a waiting period.
Yes, sir.
So what happens at the end of the three years? Does it convert to townhomes or does it convert to apartments or what does it convert to?
It would be converted to the apartments. 208 is what we show allowed in that area on Plan B. We could still do the office if we had the, if we still found a tenant past that time period, but the office is the only option up until that point.
But you could build those apartments at the end of the three-year period, correct?
Yes, sir. Or we could start the process. I'm sure it wouldn't be entertained before then.
Other questions or concerns, comments for Mr. Taylor?
I would say that 488 number is what the property is entitled to today. And so a couple, three years, maybe longer than that, staff can correct me on that timeframe. Y'all went through a limited, the amount of land that could go toward multifamily. And so that's where that 48, 488 number comes from. We're not asking for an exception. We're not asking for any more than that.
The exception would be the townhomes.
So the single-family attached is not allowed out here, so we're, we're asking to introduce an ownership option out here that's not there today. And we do have a restriction self-imposed that we will not sell to a, an institutional rental company, if you want to call them that. We're not saying an individual couldn't rent their unit if that's what they chose, but we cannot sell to, you know, American Homes for Rent or anything like that. I know that's been a concern in other projects. We have limited that inside of this book.
Meaning you've limited the number of units that a particular owner can own? Is that what you're saying?
We've just, we have said that we, as in Hines, will not sell to a rental company. And so, period. And so we, we just said, we're not going to do that. We're not in the business of developing for that sort of company.
Matt, excuse me, would that be binding on a subsequent owner? Is that going to be?
It's, it's in, it's in the book, so yes. I mean, it would be part of the zoning.
Part of, and part of the, a restriction covenant that gets recorded, I guess?
Yeah.
Hopefully?
Sure. I would imagine that restrictive covenant would get married up with our book on our
How different is the Linear Park, or is it exactly?
The Linear Park is, I think the design is very consistent with what it was before. I don't, we haven't taken away. I think we've made some things clear, like we are, we've committed that it will be accessible through the townhouse piece so that anybody going along Clary Lane can access Wilkinson Pike along that, that access point. So the, that townhouse piece will be gated, but the sidewalk itself won't have a gate. It'll be a vehicular gate. So you'll still be able to get from Clary Lane, Willow Oak over to Wilkinson Pike along that trail. And of course, you'll have your normal sidewalks along Willow Oak Trail as well.
Comments from eight of our councilmen in regards to this at this point? Ready to see it for a, a public hearing?
Maybe I said it wrong. I was talking about the grand lawn.
Grand lawn.
Oh, so the only thing about the grand lawn that has probably changed is I think on the 20, last year's version, it was between two drive aisles, and so we've really taken that drive aisle and kind of swung it to one side so that we don't have, you know, the conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles through there. But the concept is still there, and we still have the grand lawn that is encircled kind of by the U shape multifamily there in Area 5, I believe it is. So all those same concepts are still there.
Other comments, questions or concerns? We're just looking to set this for a public hearing on May 5th is the request. And I can't make a motion, so there you go.
Motion to set the public hearing for May 5th.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing on May 5th. All right, our next item, new business is zoning application for approximately 17.25 acres located along the north side of Ashers Fork Drive to be rezoned from CF to RS6. O'Brien Lloyd LLC is the applicant. Ms. Rush, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair, Commission. Let's see if I can find it. Ooh, it's a long staff report. There we are. Yeah, thank you. The subject property is 17.25 acres and it's located south of New Salem Highway along Ashers Fork Drive, east of Kason Lane. The property is contiguous to the north is Waits Creek, I'm sorry, to the north is Waits Creek subdivision. The applicant requests to rezone this property from commercial fringe to single-family residential RS-6, which would be a 6,000 square foot lot size. This would be a continuation of the development to the south, which is an RSA1 zoning district. Those are zero lot line development, and this would be a much, this would be a larger lot size than what that subdivision was. The reason for the continuation and the rezoning is because of the creek. Property along the northern portion of that site would remain as a commercial fringe zone. It's just the portion that's below the creek that would be rezoned, and that was due to the constraints of that creek for any kind of commercial development. Adjacent zoning around this property is, to the west is a planned commercial district, which is the creek side at Three Rivers Assisted, excuse me, assisted living nursing home. And to the south, as I had mentioned, is the RSA1 and has an approved plat for Waits Creek Crossing, a single-family zero lot line. And to the east is unincorporated land in Rutherford County. Future land use map does reflect the commercial use of this particular property. When that map was completed, it was probably not taken in consideration the detail of that creek because it would be very difficult for commercial development. So staff is supportive of this conflict with the 2035 future land use map for that particular reason, but that is something for the commission to discuss and for your decision. We are asking that this matter be discussed and then scheduled for a public hearing on May 5th, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if the commission has any.
Any questions for Ms. Rush regarding this application?
So I don't know, I'll make a motion that we set a public hearing for May 5th?
Can I make one comment forward?
You may.
Just, just as from a curiosity standpoint, I really, I apologize that I, it just popped into my mind though, just with kind of how this is laid out, are we going to be able to have a, I guess one of the thoughts, I'll just get out there to planning staff and to the developer is, are we going to have an issue with having the backs of commercial, you know, right up, you know, just, you know, that creek, it is a, it requires a bridge to get across it, but it's a, not a very wide creek, you know? I mean, it's me to Kathy wide through there or something like that. Are we, are we going to be able to buffer, you know, some, or do we need to going from single-family homes right there straight into commercial? What would be a typical way that we would take care of that? Is that something that we are, are working on or can handle and deal with?
So there would be a requirement for the buffer, which would be a type D, but there's also a minimum distance of where we have to require the setback from the creek. So there's no construction within that floodway, and I think it's 35 feet from top of bank.
Fifty.
Fifty on each line?
Fifty, even greater.
All right. Yep, I'll just, it just kind of popped in my mind right there, you know, because that, up there on that eastern side, it's a, that's not a very wide strip. If you're trying to plug in some commercial right there, you might be right next to them. So I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion and a second for a public hearing on May 5th. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our next item, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding townhouses, the RSA zone and other miscellaneous topics and pertaining to the following sections. Section 2, interpretation and definitions. Section 19, residential districts. Section 26, off-street parking, queuing and loading. Chart 1, uses permitted by zoning district, including chart 1 in notes. Chart 2, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements and land use intensity ratios, including chart 2 in notes. And chart 4, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I remembered last time we had a, we had a zoning ordinance amendment with a lot of different sections. You asked me to bullet point that, so.
Thank you so much. It's so much easier to read like that, I appreciate it.
Happy to accommodate. Good afternoon, Planning Commission members. This is, this is, a lot of what's in the zoning ordinance amendment is, is kind of a cleanup. You'll remember back in 2017, we adopted a zoning ordinance amendment creating the RS6 and RSA type 1, 2 and 3 zoning districts, which I think that amendment has served us well, but with all new amendments that we, that we proposed to the zoning ordinance, as we administer it, we begin to find things that need to be fine-tuned and tweaked because, you know, an ordinance amendment, when you write it, and I've written a couple of them, may sound great on paper, but then when you actually, when the rubber meets the road, there are some things that need to be modified. So one of the things that, that we found, and this kind of sprung from the fact that, that we were receiving several requests in RSA type 2, which is our suburban townhouse zoning district, for there to be single-family detached lots. And there was some ambiguity in our ordinance, I should say, there is some ambiguity in our ordinance about specifically what types of uses are allowed in each one of the RSA zones. If you'll recall, RSA type 1 mirrors the old RZ zoning, residential zero lot line. It allows zero lot line attached and detached. RSA type 2 is our suburban townhouse zoning, and RSA type 3 is our urban townhouse zoning. We have not seen a request for RSA type 3 zoning yet, but we've seen several requests for RSA type, type 2. One of them that came through was a master plan amendment and preliminary plat that we had at last month's meeting. It was for the Windwood development, and Windwood is off of Florence Road. We had originally seen a plan for townhomes to be developed on the section that was zoned RSA type 2. The, it's, property changed hands and the new developer wanted to develop single-family detached. And what we found was our ordinance was a little bit ambigu, ambiguous, excuse me. I've been sitting in that chair for two hours like you guys have. And so we needed to add some clarity to our zoning ordinance about what is permitted in each one of the zoning districts, in each one of those zoning districts, and what the standards are for each, for each one of those zoning districts. And I think that what we've tried to do is really to, to mirror what the intent of each of those zoning districts is. The RSA type 1, zero lot line, RSA type 2, suburban townhouse, and RSA type 3, urban townhouse. But one of the, one of the points of clarity that we have added is that single-family detached lots are allowed in each one of those zoning districts. So that way, we don't run upon this, the same situation in the future where someone has RSA type 2, but they want to do single-family detached lots, and we're left scratching our heads, is it, does our zoning ordinance give us the clear authority to, to allow that? Which I think, I think we could all agree that, that we would want to make sure that that is, that that is permitted. So I'll, I'll go through a couple of other parts of the amendment that we're proposing. When we adopted the, the RSA type 1, or excuse me, the RSA zoning district, which is RSA standing for residential, single-family attached, what we found is that we have two conflicting zoning, definitions in our zoning ordinance. Townhouse, we have townhouses and multifamily residential. And technically, there are certain types of single-family attached dwelling units that could qualify as multifamily under the current definition. So we, we are proposing to amend the definition of townhouse dwellings to add a sentence in there that says, this, for the purposes of this ordinance, for the, for the purposes of the zoning ordinance, townhouse dwelling units are classified as single-family attached. Consistent with the intent of the ordinance amendment that was passed in 2017 to add a zoning district called residential, single-family attached, which permits townhomes. We're proposing to make some modifications to chart 1 of the zoning ordinance and its end notes. Chart 1 goes through what is permitted in each of the zoning districts. And so right now, we just have one, one use in there that says, single-family attached, but it doesn't differentiate between single-family attached zero lot lines, single-family attached townhouse uses. And so what we've tried to do is to, to kind of create some clarity in that, in that chart so that we know what districts townhouses are permitted in and what districts, single-family zero lot lines are permitted in. Because there are already entitlements for those uses to be, to be permitted in other zoning districts other than. zoning districts other than the RSA zone. And we want to make it clear what those, what those zoning districts are. Chart 2, our bulk regulations and chart 2 end notes. In the 2017 ordinance amendment, when the RS6 zone was created, there were exterior material requirements included for this district because of the smaller lots, the proximity of those lots, of the structures in those, on those lots to other structures in that zoning district. And the ordinance specifies several different types of exterior materials with limited combustibility that must be used as the primary exterior material on each building facade. However, there are other zoning districts that are similarly situated with similar setbacks, similar lot sizes, some having actually smaller lot sizes than in the RS6 zone. So to be consistent, what we're proposing to do is to add that, that material requirement to all zoning districts that are, that are similarly situated. And language is also proposed to specify that the reason for the exterior material requirements is to minimize the extent of fire damage on adjacent structures. There's additional language proposed to be added to give the planning director authority to review requests for alternative combinations of building materials after a review of their combustibility with the building and codes director. So that just kind of clarifies the intent and the language that was included in the 2017 ordinance amendment. And then also extends that to other zoning districts that are, that have similar circumstances. In addition, the RS6 zone requires a minimum front garage setback of 35 feet in order to allow for driveways of adequate length to accommodate four vehicles. However, the balance of the structure is allowed a reduced minimum front setback of 25 feet. And we, we think that this kind of struck a good balance of a shallower front setback, of potential for a shallower front setback of 25 feet while maintaining a 35-foot setback for the, for the garage to get, to make sure we get all of the required vehicular parking off-street. There are a number of zoning districts, RS8 for example, that currently have a minimum 30-foot front building setback. This does not allow driveways of adequate depth to accommodate four vehicles. The 30-foot front setback creates a situation where if someone does try to stack two vehicles back to back, you're going to be blocking the, that vehicle, the second vehicle is going to be blocking the public sidewalk. And that's not something that's desirable in any situation because it forces pedestrians to either go on private property or to go out into the public street. So what we're proposing to do, and I think this was, this was a great part of our, the 2017 ordinance amendment, was, was creating the flexibility of a shallower setback of 25 feet, but requiring the 35 feet for the garage setback. So someone could build a home with a 25-foot setback with a recessed garage, or they could build the entire structure at 35 feet. Either way, they're getting the minimum four, four parking space requirement met in the driveway as long as there are, it's a two-car width. And that four parking space requirement is a minimum requirement in our zoning ordinance. And so this aligns our setback regulations with the minimum parking regulations. So it's, it's a little bit odd to administer when we have setback regulations that don't jibe with our parking requirements and we're having to say, well, I know your, I know your front setback is 30 feet, but really you got to be 35 if you want to meet our minimum parking requirements. So this, this I think adds additional predictability to the, to the ordinance for developers. Modifications are also proposed to the chart 2 end notes, which contain the standards for the RSA zones. We've looked through those that were, that were included in the 2017 amendment, made some tweaks to those, and I'd be happy to go over those in more detail if you like. In addition to the aforementioned revision, staff also proposes some other miscellaneous, miscellaneous revisions, apparently miscellaneous and ambiguous are tying me up today, to ensure that the language in the zoning ordinance is, is consistent throughout. The draft of the proposed ordinance is included in your agenda packet, and we would recommend that you schedule this for a public hearing on May the 5th. I'd be happy, looking forward to your, to your feedback at today's meeting. Be happy to answer any questions. We did, I see Mr. Taylor is not here. We did, we sent the ordinance amendment to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Bill Huddleston, our, our civil engineering frequent flyers here. And they both gave us some great feedback. We were able to incorporate a good deal of their feedback into, into the ordinance amendment. And we also sent it to, tried to brainstorm about a number of the landowners and developers who, who own property or are developing property in, in affected zoning districts and generally received positive feedback on the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Nick Bromley. Lots of hard work here. Much needed work, I believe, so thank you. Any specific questions, comments, concerns from the planning commission? Will we schedule it for a public hearing?
If there are any questions, I'll move to approve the public hearings scheduled for May 5th.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have a street renaming to rename an approximately two-mile-long segment of Mercury Boulevard, west of South Rutherford Boulevard to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Bromley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to give the presentation on the next two items, both of which are, are related. So you see a map before you, it's the, the entire length of Mercury Boulevard. And so our, our city council at its March 10th meeting, I don't know if remanded is the right term, Mr. Ives, that sounds pretty legalistic. It remanded this, this item to the planning commission for consideration. It's the renaming of Mercury Boulevard. Back in February, council discussed the possibility of renaming Mercury Boulevard in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And staff then endeavored to study the, the topic and brought back to the council on March 10th, a, a staff report. And council then directed staff to bring the item to the planning commission for its consideration. The planning commission, per our subdivision regulations, has, has authority over street naming issues within the city of Murfreesboro. So it's at the planning commission's discretion what to name and/or rename public streets. And so we bring before you this, this request, and it's a two-part request, and it's two, it's really can be broken down into two separate items. So we're asking you to schedule two separate public hearings. The first is for the portion of Mercury Boulevard that is colored in green. It is the majority of the roadway. It's about two miles in length. And that is the segment that we propose to rename to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And the segment in red, which is just to the east of South Rutherford Boulevard, it is a small segment of Mercury Boulevard that many of us probably think is actually named John Bragg Highway, but that is named Mercury Boulevard. And beyond that red segment is where the John Bragg Highway street name begins. So east of South Rutherford Boulevard, there are really only two properties that are addressed as Mercury Boulevard. But one's a big one. It's a, it's an apartment complex with about 216 dwelling units. And the other one is Circle K. So what, what we thought would be a good idea to study and what our emergency service providers have agreed is, this is a good opportunity, if the street is renamed, to formally change the street name east of South Rutherford Boulevard to John Bragg Highway. Because right now, I think that's probably what the expectation of most people is, is that the street name actually changes at Rutherford Boulevard, but it actually doesn't. There's about a 600-foot segment that is, that is Mercury Boulevard to the east of South Rutherford Boulevard. And what our emergency service providers have told us is that whenever possible, having a street change names at a recognizable intersection, a predictable intersection, provides clarity and reduces confusion for emergency service providers. So the area in red, we would recommend that you schedule a public hearing for May the 5th to consider renaming it to John Bragg Highway. And the area in green, we would propose that you schedule a public hearing, if you see fit, for May 5th to consider renaming it to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Included in the agenda materials is a study that I've updated a little bit since it went to council, but, but it's generally the same study that was presented at council back on March the 10th. It outlines the process that we take to rename streets and, and, and implement address changes. If the planning commission decides to approve the street name change, we, staff would determine an effective date for the street name change. That would be roughly three months or so after the, the vote by the planning commission. We want to give people ample time to make the change. We want to give service providers ample time to make the change if you, if you were to, to vote in the affirmative on these two street name change requests. Back in early 2019, the planning commission adopted a policy regarding street renaming. And I'll, I'll read it verbatim. "It shall be the policy of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission to rename existing streets only when a legitimate public interest is served and only when it promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the community as a whole, e.g. in conjunction with a road construction project, or to eliminate confusion for emergency service providers. The planning commission shall not endorse street renaming requests that do not meet the standard." So the study goes on to state that there is a duplication of the Mercury street name in Laverne. The address ranges between the two streets are not coincident, but still that would eliminate a street name duplication. In addition, city staff is of the opinion that creating the street name break at South Rutherford Boulevard complies with this street renaming policy, as it is beneficial to the community and for emergency service providers, and it will help to reduce confusion by creating the, the name change at a more recognizable location. Beyond the items noted above, however, is the reason this proposed street name change was brought up in February, which is to honor the substantial contributions made by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the advancement of civil rights in our nation, and as a result, in our community as well. In addition, it is intentional that Mercury Boulevard was chosen to be studied for this renaming, as it is located in an area of significant cultural and historical importance. Renaming a street after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. embraces the diversity of our community and honors the legacy of Dr. King. The street renaming policy states that renamings must serve a legitimate public interest and promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community as a whole, and staff believes that this renaming achieves these goals. The public hearing requirement for street renaming is nothing, to my knowledge, that is codified either in ordinance or state law. However, it's our custom to have a public hearing anytime that we have a, a street renaming. And in this instance, we are recommending public hearings for May the 5th. We will notify all property owners that have property adjacent to the, to the roadway. In fact, been working on compiling that list. Ms. Jacob and Ms. Harris have been working on the notices in anticipation of the planning commission scheduling a public hearing for May the 5th. And it's upwards of 500 notices that we are, that we are sending out. And I've also drafted a, a question and answer brochure to go in those notices so that people whose addresses may be impacted by a potential action of, of the street renaming will understand how the process works and understand the efforts that we will take in order to make that process and that transition for them as smooth as possible. One of the points that I did want to make is, and it is being, if you move forward, we're bringing it to you as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, as, as the proposed street name. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District has indicated to us that the DR at the beginning of that name, the, the doctor abbreviation, which is the same abbreviation as, or which is the same as the abbreviation for the word drive, has the potential, because of human and computer error, to, to pose some, some potential issues. If, I think what, what they have told us is that if it is input perfectly, and if the computer is, the system that is, that is, that is, is being operated, interprets it perfectly, it should not be an issue. But due to the chance of human error or computer error, having that, the DR abbreviation be the same as for doctor and drive has the potential to create some, some, some hiccups. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. But we have brought it to you as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. And I think that, Mr. Ives, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if the planning commission, we could advertise it as, as that, and then the planning commission could consider that in its deliberations the night of the public hearing.
Correct.
Meaning, meaning we could decide to vote for a name change, but not the exact name change that is brought to us, i.e. leave off the doctor if we decided that was a, a safety issue or we find out.
That could be the planning commission decision, in my opinion. I believe, yes, you could, you'd have that.
Okay. And can I ask you? Sorry.
I'm done. Sorry.
So we're going to send notices via mail to, to the residents and business owners in that area? That's how we're going to send, are we going to put any signs out, say, you know, any kind of zoning change applied for, kind of signs? There's.
We don't customarily put out signs for, for street remappings. We'll do the, the notice on our website, the notice on, in the, in the newspaper, and then the, the individual notices to all property owners and, and occupants of, so if it's, even if it's someone who, who is renting an apartment, they will get a notice about this.
Yeah, so one thing I'd mention, and I, I got some, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'll wait for you to be done.
No, no, I was done. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to mention to you guys, I think I had sent something along to Matthew, then Matthew sent it out to everybody about some communication I had with a, a business owner on our previous, uh, street name change. You know, it's, I sent that, you know, it's extremely sensitive. And I, I think, you know, as we go into this process, we, we may want to go into this with the idea that, I mean, look, I, we, I didn't feel like necessarily we were able to, to think through there, or that I was all the way, you know, had thought through that completely and had a full understanding of what impact it was going to have. And probably because I'm a new guy up here in this role, but, you know, I guess what I would say is just to make sure that, I mean, if nobody shows up to this public hearing, I'll be, you know, really surprised and think, you know, somehow we're missing something because, man, the fervor for which the, the communication came back to us and the conversations that I had with that business owner were substantial. There were some things in there that weren't real consistent, as the things that were said in there to, that were going to have to be done. It really wasn't the case necessarily, but there were a lot of things that are going to have to be done. So this is something that's pretty substantial. That was, you know, like seven addresses we're going to change. And this is, you know, I had a couple or three conversations about that, and they were very, very difficult. This is going to be four, 500. So, you know, I guess I'm just trying to kind of lay that out. We all need to be really prepared, think through. Obviously, there's a lot of good reason, you know, on the council, I voted to, to consider this. There's obviously substantially good reason. I'm just kind of saying, we need to make sure we thought through this a lot in this next month before it gets to us in the planning, in the, in the public hearing stage. And then even after that, we still need more time to vet, think through all those things. You know, let's just make sure we do it. It is going to be a substantial amount of work, it sounds like, for 500 businesses, citizens, whatever the mix looks like. I can't remember what the exact mix was, but.
Yeah, and if y'all would like, I'd be happy to. Yeah, and if y'all would like, I'd be happy to just give you a brief synopsis of, of what we do in order to implement the, the, the change.
I'm okay. I mean, I don't necessarily need everybody to, because I've already heard it, but I was going to...
So, so what we do is, we try to take care of all of the notification for, for government offices and utilities, and so, so there is a, a pretty thorough list that we send out the notifications to, that, that's, you know, all impacted city departments, such as police, fire, solid waste, county departments, such as the Election Commission, the Sheriff's Office, the ambulance service, the USPS, all applicable utilities. It's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty exhaustive list, but that's not to say, and, and, and those individuals should not have to contact the post office or, or the Election Commission. The city takes care of notifying all of those, all of those entities. And so, what the people who have addresses that are affected will have to do is, they really have to notify people that, that they personally do business with. So if it's a, if it's a business that's being impacted, they would have to notify their customers, you know, their, and any other, you know, regulatory authority that they might be licensed under, whether that's a state agency, or, they would have to, for individuals who live in the area, would have to notify their family and friends, you know, their bank, their mortgage company, any other entity that they personally do business with. And they'll also have to get online and complete a change-of-address form if, if their home address is affected. It's my understanding they won't have to go down to, and I'm glad that they won't have to do this, they won't actually have to go down and get a new driver's license. I think they can just fill out a form online. I think it's, it's relatively simple. And there are probably going to be a handful of, of addresses who will get different address numbers. I've noticed some, some inconsistencies in the, in the numbering. For example, South Rutherford Boulevard splits the 2300 block, so we'll probably want to start a new block, so that, so the apartment complex and Circle K, I would imagine, are, are a couple of, a handful of, of addresses that, where the number will need to be changed. But the vast majority of numerical addresses will need to be, or will, will, will remain the same. And for those whose numbers are going to be impacted, they'll have to put new numbers on their, on their buildings. That's kind of a synopsis of what we do. We, we send, we send two notices to all of the service providers, a reminder notice to make sure that they are, that they are updating their records. And then we also send two notices to all property owners and, and occupants as well, to make sure that, that we, to make sure that they are aware that we, if, if they've forgotten about the effective date, that, that we send them a reminder notice.
Could I make just a suggestion, that potentially we would make some signs for this one, for one of this magnitude? I mean, as far as 500 people, I mean, I just kind of...
I think we could do that. It would delay the public hearing, because that will take several weeks to make those signs.
Never mind. It's all right. Scrap it.
I'll make a motion. We set a public hearing for the change of Mercury Boulevard to Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard on May the 5th.
I'll say it.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And would you like to also make that motion for the item 8?
So moved.
Second.
Motion. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you all.
Okay. Any other staff reports in business this afternoon? All good? All right. Thank you very much, then. We stand adjourned.